And we did that because of a presentation that our staff was able to witness at the beginning of the 23-24 school year. Since that time, we have lost touch just a little bit with what 1% means. And so, we're moving to something, or have moved to something that is a little more well-known, and instead, we're calling it our best and then some, which kind of means something similar. But the students that were awarding these two are showing us their best and then some more. And I think that's who Swain County wants to be, and that has received a good amount of support from all of our staff. So, rather than 1%, I apologize for not explaining that earlier. We're only six months into the year. We're going to call it our best and then some. Is that all right?
That sounds good.
Okay, so could we start with the high school tonight? And let's ask Ms. Reyna Hernandez to come to the front, and her sponsoring teacher to come and help us get to know Reyna just a minute. And if it would help, if you would come to the microphone. Thank you.
Okay. All right. This is Reyna Hernandez, and she is in my physical science class. I'm Mrs. Blair Ogburn, her teacher last year and this year in science. I nominated Reyna Hernandez for the 1% award, the best and then some award, because I believe that she absolutely deserves it. Reyna takes all assignments seriously and takes wonderful notes on vocabulary, class lectures, and all assignments. She has a knack for physics, and on the last two tests, she tied for the highest grades. She helps her peers when they need it. Reyna is funny and friendly, and she shows that school is important to her through all of her work efforts. So, thank you Reyna for being a great science student, for always coming to class, for taking it seriously and working really hard.
We had two, we had a high school student that was not able to be here last month, Annie Lewis. Is she here tonight? I don't see anyone. We'll save hers for another night also. We had two middle school students who were not able to attend, and the first is Isabella Ponton. Would you come to the front, please?
So, I heard that Isabella might be a little nervous, and I was going to play a mean joke on you and say that you had to speak in front of everybody, but I decided to not do that. But I have Isabella Ponton with me, and this is what your teachers had to say about you. We want to take a moment to recognize and celebrate our best and then some student for eighth grade, Isabella Ponton. Isabella puts in the effort to do her best, whether it's with her classwork or on the wrestling mat. She demonstrates a great level of commitment. With wrestling, it takes a strong individual to step into the ring and have that level of determination. Also, Isabella has a great ability to stay focused, even when there are plenty of distractions. Her concentration and discipline are qualities that many students today struggle with, and her focus undoubtedly contribute to her success, both academically and athletically. Keep working hard, Isabella. Your hard work, bravery, and focus are an inspiration to your peers and a testament to what can be achieved with determination and resilience. We are so proud of you.
Also, from last month, who was not able to be here, J.J. Phillips. Come on up.
All right. So, I have J.J. Phillips with me, and this is what your sixth grade teachers had to say about you, J.J. J.J. exemplifies what it means to give your all and inspire others along the way. His kindness and compassion make him a beloved member of our school community, earning the admiration of his classmates and teachers alike. J.J.'s determination and positive attitude set him apart even when things aren't easy. He faces challenges with perseverance and an wavering work ethic that motivates everyone around him. This year, J.J. took on a new challenge by joining the middle school wrestling team. Despite being new to the sport, he approaches every practice with grit and the desire to grow. J.J.'s commitment to improving and giving his best on the mat is the same dedication he brings to the classroom. J.J.'s kindness, hard work, and resilience make him an outstanding role model. He is truly deserving of the our best and then some award, as he goes above and beyond in everything he does. And I just want to say, J.J. is named after my favorite basketball player on the planet, J.J. Reddick, so give me a fist bump on that. This is J.J. Phillips.
New for this month from Swain Middle School, Lane Sellers.
All right. I am Megan Lucas. I am a sixth grade social studies teacher at Swain Middle School. I'm also Lane's leadership teacher as well. I'm very pleased to have Lane in class. This young man is one of the first people I see every day, comes bouncing into my class, always with a smile, always, always, always. When we were trying to pick who was going to be our best and then some for this month, all of his teachers, we all said the same name at the exact same time, and it was Lane. And some of the reasons that Lane is our best and then some is, one is the, one of the reasons is, at the beginning of the year, a lot of our elementary students have a lot of hard times transitioning from elementary school to middle school, where there is a lot more work demanded of them and the grading system changes. But Lane has been able to balance not one, but two sports. He is a midget football player, and he also plays middle school basketball. And he always is checking his grades. He's always asking, how can I get my grades better? How can I do better? And based off of what I understand, talking to Coach Neesum, he's the exact same way on the basketball court. He's always trying to improve. Lane is a kid who everyone likes. If you don't get along with Lane, there's something wrong with you, because he gets along with everyone, and he's always willing to help others and his teacher. And so, we are so proud of Lane and his willingness to always work with others and exemplify our best and then some. So, congratulations, Lane.
From West Elementary this evening, we have Sunny Beasley. Don't think so. It's okay. We'll just hang on to it. We'll get it to her. Okay, so, let me see. Do we have another West Elementary?
Legend Chickalilly.
I don't have that one. Legend Chickalilly, correct? What an amazing, wonderful name. I love that. Legend, come on up here with Ms. Sutton. And Legend, I will personally bring a certificate to you tomorrow or the next day. Okay?
So, this, as a principal, it's hard to pick out of, I think I'm at 417 now. It's hard to pick a student that stands out. But the other day in an IEP meeting, it was clear who my student was going to be. This young man is an incredible example of perseverance and positivity. Thinking about 1%, or you think about our best and then some, he has the mindset of growth and not giving up ever. I say that because despite significant challenges early in his life, he has shown remarkable growth and resilience. His determination to succeed is evidenced in his outstanding performance in second grade, and then in third grade, and in third grade, he exited our E.C. program, and last week, he was dismissed from speech. So, his ever-present smile, there it is, there it is. I knew it was there. And his upbeat attitude, you never see him, that Legend doesn't just look at you, and he meets you in the hall, and he's ready to go, and he's always been the best person to, he's everybody's best friend. He's optimistic, and I'm so proud of the amazing person he is becoming. I'm so thankful for the opportunity to have witnessed the growth of this young boy. His mom has been a huge support and advocate for him in his journey, and I also appreciate all that she has done alongside me. I can't wait to see what Legend accomplishes, and for sure, I will continue to be one of his biggest fans and be shouting, he's our best and then some.
From East Elementary, is Ella Boston here? No? That's all right. We'll catch Ella next time. How about Elizabeth Duncan? With Santa's helper.
I'm very excited.
Good evening. My name is Tammy Messier, and I teach first grade at East Elementary. I'm here tonight to honor one of my students, Elizabeth Duncan. Liz came to our school this year having completed kindergarten in Tennessee. She went through a lot of changes to join us here in Swain County, including starting school two weeks after the other students. It was a tough transition for her, and we were all concerned about how she would adjust to all of the new changes. Well, I'm here to tell you that not only did she come in on that first day with a huge smile, but also with determination to succeed. Liz is an incredibly positive and happy little lady. She comes in every morning with a sparkle in her eyes, ready to learn. She takes her responsibilities very seriously and attends to her daily routines without reminders or cues. She works hard every day and always tries her best. When something is difficult for her, she never gives up or complains. She just keeps on pushing to learn it for herself. She accepts challenges with a go-get-'em attitude and has never let academic struggles deter her from trying. She has shown a lot of growth since the beginning of the school year and continues to shine brighter every day, not only with academics, but in social settings, too. She is very kind and polite and always takes care of her friends and her teachers. She's always there with a hug, a smile, or some words of encouragement to keep the others going. She is loved by all the other students in our room, along with all the other kids she comes in contact with. Everybody she meets becomes her friends. She sets an example for others by always trying her best and looking out for everyone around her. I know that as she faces future struggles and challenges, she will do her very best to overcome them, not only this year, but I see that continuing in her future. Thank you, Liz, for being an amazing student and friend. I can't think of anyone who deserves this award more than you. I'm so incredibly proud of you.
Okay, I'm Ms. Jessica from Bright Adventures, and I chose Alora Corbin as our student of the month. And I was having a little trouble placing the 1%, so the veteran then some works out tremendously. So, I wanted to recognize her because she is such a great leader, and we just got our lighthouse status last year, you know, so we really try to develop that. So, she's a great leader and a great helper in our classroom. Sorry, I've got gum in my mouth. Something that Alora does really well is she helps all of our students, and it doesn't matter what it is. Like, if they are having trouble cleaning up their center, they need to put on a jacket, they need to find gloves, she jumps right in and she does anything that we need her to do. And we had a situation in our classroom. I have a very active classroom usually, and so we limit our children that play in our centers. And the center that this one little girl wanted was full, and Alora happened to be in that center. She jumped up out of her chair and was like, you can have my spot! And nobody had asked her, you know, it was just, that's just the things that she does in our classroom. And I said, Alora, I'm so proud of you for being so kind. And she said, I like being kind. And so, just little things like that. And I wanted to recognize her for that, and I'm just grateful to her family that she's in our classroom, and I get to see her every day. So, Alora, come on.
I think those are all that we have. At least, those are all the certificates. Did we miss anyone? Could we give them a round of applause one more time? Now, moms, dads, kids, teachers, if you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to, but you don't have to. So, if you have other things that you would like to go do, go do them. Only you.
Did it take it?
Let me make my way to the back. Who's going to say the pledge tonight?
Did you?
Oh, I hope all of us. Who's going to lead the pledge?
I will.
Okay, you lead the pledge. Who's going to say the prayer?
I will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you once again for allowing us this opportunity. Thank you once again for the community that we live in, the school that we serve, the families that we get to work with, and the families that we get to serve for. Lord, we don't take this lightly. We ask that you would, your hand would be in all of it, that your will would be performed, and we know that you do all things well and you make no mistakes. We ask that you would be with each one that's represented here, be with our faculty and staff from top to bottom. Lord, we ask that you would lead, guide, and direct our lives, and that you'd lead, guide, and direct us as a school board. Most of all, that you'd be with our kiddos. Lord, they're so special to us. We love them. We support them. Lord, we want what's best for them. And Lord, as long as we keep you in the center of our, the center of our focus and the center of our will, we know that we can accomplish all of those things. To be with us again, we do love you. We thank you. We ask all these things. In your precious holy name, amen.
Mr. White, the reason I jumped in is because technically, you're not the chair right now. On December, the first meeting, first regular meeting in December, we don't have a chair. We have to elect one. Before we do that, I think, though, it would be a really good idea to recognize Casey Davis. Casey, welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your election, and I think everyone is really looking forward to working with you for the next four years. You bring a lot of experience. I've already seen and expertise, and I'm excited to have you here. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anything you want to say tonight?
No, just thank you, and I'm looking forward to serving.
All right. All right. Because it's the organizational moment in our board's life, I am supposed to act as the board chair for just a minute and to ask for nominations for the Board of Education Chair. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Cody. Got one more here, right, Cody? This is your, I nominate Cody White.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any other nominations? All in favor of Cody White continuing as board chair for the coming year, please signify by raising your hand. That's a unanimous agreement with Cody abstaining. Thank you so much. So, Mr. White, congratulations, condolences. And the rest of the meeting is yours, sir.
Thank you. And I believe with that, the next part would be the nomination and the election of vice chairman of the Board of Education. At this time, do I have a nomination for the vice chairman?
I nominate Mitch Carson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing none, all those in favor of Mitch Carson remaining as the vice chair, please raise your hand. It's unanimous with Mr. Carson abstaining. Congratulations. With that, we move on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda that we have?
I don't have any additions. Please notice, Mr. White, that I added an F for discussion that has to do with a contract which we received this morning, and between Ms. Sneed and I, we will attempt to explain that to all of you. I'm not asking that you take action on this contract because you just received it tonight. And I think that you would like an opportunity to look it over before then. We'll talk about that in just a few minutes. In the past, we have approved the audit financial statements. By law, that's not required. Okay? That would be at your all's pleasure. Again, you just received that audit statement this evening, and it's very comprehensive. So, what do you think the pleasure of the board would be on that? Just to hear it and accept it as a report, just on face value? Or do you want to listen and then study and come back?
I think you could, it would be my preference just to accept it as a report, because it's an audit. You really don't, to accept it or not, it's what you've been audited. So, I think just having it as a report is sufficient.
Okay. And you can always, after it's over and then you've had an opportunity to look through all of the fine print, you can always be in contact with Stephanie, preferably. I mean, I'll answer what I can and then give you additional information as you need. Okay? So, technically...
You can strike out B.
Just strike out B on action items, and we'll just accept it face value. Okay?
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the strikeout of B on action items?
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All favor of Mr. White's hand. Agenda's approved.
With that, we don't have lunch very often, so I don't remember your name.
Shannon Dunson.
Shannon's going to come and share the audit report with us.
Chairman, board members, Mr. Sale, thank you for allowing our firm to do the audit and to be able to be here this evening to present what we feel is good news to you about the Swain County Schools finances. And so, I'm going to go through a few of the highlights. If you have any questions, definitely reach out to Stephanie. Feel free to reach out to myself as well. Our opinion of the financial statements is unmodified. That's a clean opinion. That's the best opinion you can receive on a set of financial statements. So, excellent job. The separate letter that comes basically lists any significant estimates. These are the same estimates that you would see across the state in every school board audit, so nothing unusual. And we had no disagreements or difficulties with management. We asked for a lot of information. Everything was very professionally prepared in a very timely manner. We actually came in, we were here on site just right before the storm and, you know, kind of had to get things done a little bit quicker to get in and out. And Stephanie and her team did an excellent job at getting everything put together and kind of edging us to get out. I don't think we realized how severe the storm was going to be, and Stephanie was kind of, you know, it's pretty bad. You might want to finish up a little early. So, we appreciate that and her looking out for us. Looking at your fund balance, you had about $69,000 in fund balance in your general fund. You increased by just about $5,000, but the majority of your funds are kept in the other special revenue fund, because you do, the majority of your unrestricted funds comes from Impact Aid. And so, that sits over in other special revenue. So, you increased that by almost $1.5 million, ending the year with about $6.5 million in funds that are going to be mostly unrestricted. State and federal grants are required to, you get what you spend with the cap that they give you. And then capital outlay, you spent about $12,000, ending the year with $161,000 in fund balance. Your fund balance is going to be compared to your personal savings account. That's what you have to be able to spend in future years out of each of these funds. Looking at your other special revenue, $6.1 million is what's mostly unrestricted to be able to utilize as the district. Looking at budget versus actual, pleased to report, there are no overages in actual expenditures compared to the budgets, which you all approved, as well as any amendments that were approved throughout the year. So, again, very detailed reporting done on those. From a child nutrition standpoint, we look at cash as a basis of how the program's performing financially. And last year, about $78,000 in cash was used. End of the year balance was about $554,000. So, went down some, however, still a fund balance or cash in the child nutrition program. We look at that a little different based upon the accounting rules for child nutrition versus the rest of the funds for the district. Looking ahead to findings, we had no financial statement findings, no federal or state award findings. We look in detail at several of the federal and state awards. Did not identify any issues with how any of the federal or state grants were utilized. Then, kind of wrapping it up with some supplementary information, here's a quick look at your revenue over time, noting the significant increase in federal revenue kind of since COVID. That's going to be a lot of those Esser funds, which, as you know, are wrapping up the very, very tail end of it at this point. That will go back down. Most of the state increases really come with additional state expenditures. You know, when retirement rate increases, when salaries increase, and those type of increases come about are when the state revenue increases. And this is going to be your COVID revenue, similar, most of it's Esser, not quite all of it. But this is the spending level. Spent about $1.5 million in 2024. A lot of what has been spent has been for one-time projects. Just kind of keeping in mind that the expenditures, a dollar doesn't stretch as far in '24, '25 as it did in 1920. And so, Esser was able to come in and help some with inflation. So, as expenditures may have to be right-sized, just making sure that your budget is kind of right-sized with the available funding going forward without those Esser funds. And I know Stephanie's been working hard on making sure that's the case. And this is your local fund balance over time. Looking at, again, since COVID, you've been able to charge some indirect cost on those federal grants, which has been able to help build some of that fund balance. Again, that's kind of going away, so going into the future. That indirect cost also goes away. Capital outlay, you'll see there's a spike in 2020. A lot of times with capital outlay, we cut off on June 30th, which is the middle of the summer, when there are a lot of projects going on. And so, sometimes, timing on that can be challenging as well. And that's all I have. Do you all have any questions? I appreciate you guys working with us and all of the hard work that finance has put in.
There was significant increase in fund balance this year, but I am assuming that increase in fund balance is because Impact Aid came through with additional funds. I would say that they have owed us for quite a while, and that's why we're seeing that bump. Would that be fair?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not necessarily an ongoing forever increase.
Yes. And what that means, Stephanie, is that when federal impact, when Impact Aid comes in from now on, there is nothing for us to plan on from the past. We are up to balance, up to date with the federal government, and anything that we give can be drawn this year, and that's all. Correct? Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any reason to not accept that. I just, that's, that's an amazing report, in my opinion. And Stephanie, thank you, to you and your team, and thank you for your audit findings. I'm just telling you, there are a lot of school systems who would like to be able to sit here and go, that's pretty nice.
Yeah.
Okay? Even though we have work to do. Okay? Any questions? The next item on the discussion is the Central Office NC Star Plan, and that is in your packet of information. And the pages that I would draw your attention to primarily are pages three and four on that. The other is preliminary information. That includes the goals of our strategic plan. R.L. asked a really good question a few minutes ago, and it's kind of semantics, but it's not really. One of our goals talks about going from zero to four schools that have a rating of B. schools that have a rating of B. And what that means is, right now, Swain County School has, Swain County School System has no schools that have received a B on the report card, on their report card. Okay? But our goal is by 2028 for all of our schools to be at a B rating. And that's a lofty goal. Okay? That's like, that's state championship-level goal. But I feel like, and I think, I hope that my staff feels like, if you don't have a high goal to reach for, then maybe you're not reaching as high as you ought to. Okay? That doesn't mean, that line does not mean that we could have any number of Bs from zero to four, because that could be confusing in the way that it's written. Okay? And I asked the staff this year at the Central Office, I said, "Okay, given our three primary goals, improvement goals for the district, what can your department do to help move items out of the way for our staff and our schools?" Or to support the schools in the pursuit of their goals. And each department came up with at least what we call a wildly important goal, or maybe more. As you're looking at mine, I have three primary wildly important goals. One of them is to spend 10% of my time every week in the schools. I think that that's critical so that I can see them, and they can see me, and we can have conversations, which also goes to a second goal, and that is to give them, the staff, the opportunity to have input in direction and to have a connection with our legislators and representatives, because I have those roads for them. And then the third, the third goal that I have is for us to meet together monthly as directors and also as administrators and talk about what our wildly important goals are and how we're doing. So I selected three. Other departments did not. For example, Stephanie, what are your primary goals? I'm going to put you on the spot. What are your primary goals for school improvement?
So mine must have helped with saving teachers and schools, so they can be more focused on students by implementing different programs, smaller programs, and just processes that would help save us some time.
Moves, it moves items out of the way for our staff. Okay? Barbara, what's your primary goal? Did you see her cut her eyes out? Wasn't that good?
Not doing all careers within the CTE or Dalewood construction.
And sometimes you meet that, and sometimes maybe not. But that's why it's a wildly important goal. It's something that matters, but we have a struggle getting to. I'm not going to go through all the goals. I assume that you've had an opportunity to look at them, and these were selected by those departments. I'm going to ask that you approve those and that we have the opportunity to report back to you now. The nice thing that wildly important goals, the nice thing about them is, once you become familiar and comfortable with them and they're working, you can do away with them and develop another one to help you move forward. This is not something that's written in stone so that if you achieve it, there's no more growth. Okay? I mean, if you're batting 330, once you, once you hit that goal of 330, you want to go to 335, don't you? It's the same kind of idea. And so that's what our department should want to do. Do you have any questions about any of those goals? But feel free to ask them anything that you want to. Are we good? Okay. I always really wanted you to call somebody out. I'm sorry. Okay? So I will ask for your approval of that when we get to our action items. All right? The new middle school is moving right along, and it, sometimes people may think that it's moving slowly, but it takes time. And sometimes you go a little bit slow at the beginning to move fast later. And right now, we're at a place where on Friday, we'll be interviewing for our construction manager at Risks, and then we'll be bringing a proposal back to you. But meanwhile, the commissioners have been talking with us in some meetings, and they are asking that the board consider something. And that is, they would like to use, and by the way, this is the first time this has been stated publicly, and I conferred with Kevin Siegel, that was my phone call, just before this meeting, to make sure that we're at a good place to do this. The commissioners are wanting to take money from the interest that they are receiving from the Road to Nowhere Settlement and apply that to this grant for their match. And what that means for the public and for anyone else, we receive $52 million, but we are, the commissioners are required to provide 5% more. 5% of $52 million is 2.6 million. And they, the commissioners, intend to use interest, not the primary, interest money from the Road to Nowhere Settlement to create that match. What they would like for the board to consider is naming something at the new middle school campus after the North Shore Road. Okay? I had our lawyer draw up a resolution, and it's there for you to consider, it's there for you to change. But this, I believe, would be the way to move forward. I have suggested that we call the campus of the middle school the North Shore Campus. Now, I know that that's a large statement. Okay? It doesn't have to be that. It can be whatever you want for it to be. All right? But I think that the reason the commissioners want for us to consider that is they want the, the public of Swain County to understand that the money that was given from the federal government to the county in lieu of the North Shore Road to benefit Swain County for years to come. And they believe that applying this money towards the middle school benefits the students and will benefit Swain County for generations forward. I'm pretty sure that that is their intent. That's what they have said. Have I spoken, RL, you've been part, and Lisa, you've been part of those meetings. Mitch, you were there. Have I spoken that effectively? Okay? So, Mr. White, I would entertain a conversation on that, and I know that you, I don't know if the board has had an opportunity to really talk about that or consider that. What are your thoughts? How would you like to move forward?
I mean, we, we can have a discussion about it now if there's any suggestions of anything different than the resolution that's been proposed by yourself and the attorneys. Certainly, we do want to acknowledge that difference. That is where the money's going to be coming from. I think that that is using interest money. It's not from taxpayers, it's not from anything like that. It's being used in that fashion that they're giving it that kind of accreditation is appropriate. It's just making sure that that is exactly what we want to do.
So what are the thoughts of the rest of the board on this?
Is it something we need to, to do tonight?
Not necessarily, RL. I think by putting this on the table tonight as a point of discussion, that you are, in my opinion, effectively showing the commissioners that you have intent to honor their desire, but that there may need to be more discussion amongst yourselves and maybe even with them as well. Okay?
And for clarification, are they asking specifically for the entire campus to be named that, or would they be fine with anything, whether it was the gym, the fields? Have they, in any of your conversations, been specific in that? And is that something that we need to decide tonight?
They have, to my knowledge, unless someone else has had a conversation with someone, they have not put any guidelines other than they would like the North Shore label to be attached to something. Okay? I would advise that we make it as substantial as you feel that we can. Okay? And I know that there's been conversation about, the campus is a very large statement. I understand that. But I think it should be larger personally. This is my opinion. Be larger than just a classroom. Okay? Do you understand what I mean? Okay? Significant to, enough to remember. Okay?
Well, two thoughts that I had, and I spoke to you today on this to make it public, that, you know, there's a plaque that's involved in the, in the new building process, and I think it would be appropriate to have a plaque, especially next to the building plaque that states, you know, whatever the statement needs to say to whoever enters the building that the state, the match to the special needs grant was funded specifically from the North Shore money. And I also think that it would be a good idea to entertain putting a sign, like our schools, whatever our school sign's going to look like, it's out on the road next to that, being that's the road, official road to nowhere. It's Fontana Road, we know. But that's the road that people travel to, go to the North Shore. I think that would be very appropriate as well, too, just to put that as a suggestion on the floor.
All right. What are your thoughts, Casey? I'm not in charge. I'm sorry.
No, that's not. I mean, I think in concept, I like the idea just fine. Maybe up for a little bit more discussion about just understanding the, the deal there to be made between us and the county for what they want.
Okay. Would, would you be comfortable with our construction team having that conversation with the members of the commissioner and construction team?
Sure.
And outlining it, and then they could come back and report to you?
Yeah.
Okay? Is that all right?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Should we have any specifics that we ask? Like, is there anything specific maybe that you would want us to, you know, to kind of give direction on, something that you'd want us to see? Give us, it'll just give us an idea of kind of maybe how to open the conversation.
Yeah. I mean, I think it, I think that what the commissioners are doing, like, they're wanting to do this in a way to benefit the schools, not hurt the county, not do anything like that. And they're asking for that. I think it's just basically pinning down the details. What exactly are you asking? We want to be able to do that. We're very grateful that they're doing this. And so we just want to make sure that whatever we're making a decision, that everybody's on the same page. That's really the end.
Yeah.
So what specifically are you asking? If they say, well, you know, sky's the limit or however you want to do it, then that's fine. We'll decide from there. But if they're like, well, we would specifically like it to be one of these, then we can narrow it down from there.
Yeah, I believe we're all in agreement. We want the North Shore recognized on it.
Absolutely.
It's just a matter of how we want to show that.
Okay. All right.
So I think, I think it's great. I mean, a lot of our kids' ancestors-
That's right.
-are from that area, and I think it's great. We can put that back into our school.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. When they, when they mentioned that, it just, it just feels right to me. So it's exciting. So we'll continue to have conversations and draw something together and see if we can come up with and bring it back to the rest of the board. Okay? All right? Is that fair?
It's fair.
All right. Okay. Thank you all very much. On the discussion next is the Native American Student Policy First Reading. And I'm going to ask Mr. Clap Saddle if he'll come and he'll go through the specifics of this. This is something that we do every single year.
Thank you all. This particular policy, our Native American Student Policy 4060, basically outlines how we reach out to our Native American parents, how we reach out to EBCI officials in various ways to collect their feedback on not only how we're serving their students, but also how can we continue to serve them and improve that. We also report to tribal officials, parents, any interested parties, the amount of participation, both academically and with extracurricular activities. And we do that through several means. I meet annually with Principal Chief's office. We've developed a good relationship with the Secretary of Education, Sky Sampson, of the EBCI, as well as through Native American parent meetings, things like that, to gather input. Now, what this process will look like, this is our first reading. We typically, in January, have a public hearing to allow folks to provide input, ask questions, and then we ask you to approve Policy 4060. There, the only changes from last year are the changes in dates to address that we'll be looking at the next school year. There have been no changes to wording or policy other than those dates. At that point, I have a meeting scheduled with Principal Chief Hicks when we come back from school about the middle of January. Excuse me. And he or his staff may have some questions for us. They may ask for us to take a look at maybe making some changes. And we will come back to y'all with that if there are any suggestions. And also, not, not just him and his office, but also parents or any other stakeholders who might come to us in the, in the session or, you know, via emails, phone calls. Next week, we're going to place a notice online as well as call home and emails that, there's a link that folks can fill out a form with any feedback. I'll make my email and phone number available so that if there's any feedback they wish to give, we're more than happy to take it. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
So at the beginning of the January meeting, we'll need to schedule a 15-minute time period for a public hearing on this. And then we will ask that the board approve this policy as the second reading during that meeting. Okay?
Thank you all very much.
We typically have that joint meeting. March. And we need to go ahead and start working on getting, is it our year to host that?
It's our year to host.
Okay.
No.
What? Is it our year to host the chair, the-
Where do we go?
No, we had it last year.
She had it here last year.
It's their year to host it?
It's their year.
Okay. Casey, what we're talking about is, as, as part of the, an agreement between us and the tribe, we are required to have a meeting once a year that involves both boards. Generally, it's a, an eatin' meetin'.
Okay.
Okay? And last year, I think we did, we had it at East Elementary-
East Elementary.
Didn't we? And it's our turn to go there. Okay? So that'll, there'll be two meetings that month. We'll have our regular and then theirs. Okay? All right. Okay? We'll put you on the spot just a minute, Lisa, just a little bit. Okay? You had a daughter graduate last year.
I did.
Did your daughter graduate and have a diploma that had any type of, of an acknowledgement on it, like an endorsement? Do you remember? Don't remember, do you? I wouldn't remember either.
I remember just looking at it.
Okay. I didn't mean to embarrass you.
So sorry.
Well, maybe a little. We have the opportunity, through the State of North Carolina School Board policies, to place endorsements of achievement on diplomas. Barbara, does CTE have one?
Yes.
And if I'm not mistaken, we also have that for North Carolina scholars. And what else? Do y'all remember?
There's five of them.
Can you tell us what they are, Trina?
Sure. There's a college endorsement that's written as for North Carolina community colleges. There's a college slash MNC endorsement for those that are written for the University of Oklahoma System. You said the North Carolina scholars, I think. There's global language endorsement. That's the seal of vouchancy. That's it.
Okay. The legislature has required that we add two endorsements, but we get to determine at least how the arts endorsement is determined itself. Okay? And so you have in your, your packet of information, the arts proficiency endorsement requirements. And I've shared this with Sonya and her team, and they are in agreement that this is what they would like to do, the direction they would like to go. You've had an opportunity to look at it. I don't see any problems with it. It just allows for us to add another endorsement to those diplomas. Do you have any questions about that particular package?
It's just administered by the school principal, I guess.
It's, it, there are guidelines, and as long as the guidelines are met by the student, then they achieve the opportunity for that endorsement and would receive it. And it begins this year. Okay? Any questions? We would, I would ask that you approve that then during our action items. And that brings up the last discussion item. We have been given the opportunity to partner with an organization named Cartwheel. This funding to partner with them has come from legislation. Barbara, would you come and talk about Cartwheel and why this fits within our SEL plan?
So Mr. Sale and I were notified maybe three weeks ago that there was some funding that was going to be dropped into hurricane relief funding. And it was going to be pretty significant for students to receive mental health services. And there was a program called Cartwheel that would be in contact with us to look at them for their- And there was a program called Cartwheel that would be in contact with us to look at them for their services. And it's a trusted mental health provider through telehealth services. So they recognize that there is a need for mental health services within the state. But they also recognize that there's not a lot of clinicians in the area. And Cartwheel is a program that offers individual therapy, family therapy, parent guidance, psychiatric evaluation, medical management, crisis support for existing patients, and also staff therapy. And they offer this through wraparound services. We would have a case manager for all of our students and a clinical director and real-time dashboards that we could log in where we could refer students. And this money coming through legislature would be used between now and June of 2027. And it could help us with approximately 75 to 100 students could receive services through this. And it would be a program that would go through Medicaid funding first, and then it would go through insurance with, with private insurance. But no student would be denied. And there would be some financial aid pockets available to students who still need additional services. And the, the neat thing about this teletherapy, telehealth model is that it's available to students and families from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week, and on holidays, which is, is pretty rare for telehealth. A lot of times, it's just 8 to 5. And parents have to arrange how their child is going to get to therapy or how they're going to do the telehealth. So it may be that they do some of it through school. And we would work through some logistics with that with our care teams at the schools. Or it could be that they're going to be doing it at night at home through their cell phone or through a school-issued Chromebook, whatever, whatever they want to do. And then they would, the case manager would also be there for support. And then also, the really great thing is it is provided that week. So a lot of times, it could be the same-day appointment for the referral, but it's definitely within seven days, which is just about unheard of right now. So no wait lists. And services around us have wait lists if they're finding therapy. Any questions?
And this is grant-funded and it's all telehealth?
It's grant-funded and it's all telehealth, no in-person. And there would be no funding that comes out of our budgets for this. Now, again, this is just through June of 2027. So after that, be a different conversation, but.
And it targeted all ages?
Yeah, all grade levels.
Was it all grade levels? Yeah.
I think it set up to eight uninsured, but I don't think we would have, if you go Medicare first, I don't think it would be a situation.
But they're not going to deny anybody. So they'll work with us, they'll do sliding scales with families. And, and they'll still come back to us if there's other issues.
It's almost impossible to find face-to-face mental health support anymore. They just aren't there, at least in the, in the rural areas. And the demand has increased. So I see this as a great option. I am not going to ask for you all to approve the contract tonight unless you just want to, because you just got it and it's like 24 pages long. I will tell you that this contract came from John Hinning and Campbell Shatley. So they went through it, or gone through it. And it is the same contract that Macon County Schools is going to use because they're going to participate in this as well, okay? But if you're not comfortable voting on it, that's fine. We can bring it up. I would like to have permission to give you, maybe to the end of the week, to look at it and then to poll you by email for approval. But then we would have a public vote in January if that's, if that's appropriate. But that's up to you all, okay?
Is that what you want to do?
Just have a chance to look at it and then be polled later on this week?
And then you vote on it publicly in January?
Okay.
And just a question. I, like, we have a student that needs assistance, this kind of assistance.
Mm-hmm.
Are the parents notified of that?
Oh, definitely.
Yes.
Yeah, that's actually the first step. They can't do anything without parents' involvement. They have to sign off on it and agree to it.
Okay. We can't do that per the Parent Bill of Rights, okay?
And we weren't doing that before Parent Bill of Rights, just, just so everyone's aware.
Thank you, Barbara. I didn't, I didn't mean to imply that we have been.
So it is, I mean, it's no cost to our system, it's just a telehealth.
Yeah.
It would be just like going to a doctor and having to copay, essentially. But if a family couldn't afford that, there would be a sliding scale. And even if that couldn't be handled, they would come back to the district and we would work it out. Because there is a small pocket of financial aid funding. But if we needed other resources, we would find it.
Barbara, do we know what the cost would look like, you know, post this grant money? If we were to continue it on our own accord?
I don't have that in writing, but it would be similar to this model.
Okay.
Moving forward. Did he give you the model? Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. I believe those are all of the discussion items on the agenda. Is it appropriate to move into action items?
I've already asked, there's no need for closed sessions.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I would recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the consent agenda, including personnel and the minutes from the November 12th, 2024, and December 2nd, 2024 meetings.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All favor by show of hands?
I would, we don't need to approve the audit financial statements. So I would recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the Central Office NC Star Plan.
Motion.
Second.
Further discussion? All favor by show of hands? Passing.
I would recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the arts endorsement.
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All favor by show of hands? Passing.
Joanne, I believe that those are all of the approvals for tonight that we can cover, correct? Have I missed?
Do we need to officially table the resolution and the mental health? I don't know.
I, I, personally, I don't think so because it was just a discussion item. I know that it's on the agenda, but I did put that if it's, if it's appropriate to approve that.
Yeah, because you haven't made a recommendation officially.
I have not.
So there's nothing before us other than a discussion. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear so we can go ahead and put it on the next.
All right. Okay. Joanne, do we have any public comment? Okay. May I have just a, a point of interest or question?
Okay.
Recently, in communication with all of you, I mentioned some core school board training that's going to be held in Asheville on January 29th and 30th, okay? This is a wonderful opportunity. It's free, okay? And I know that it takes a lot of time. And just, I, I can read your eyes pretty well. Just because we register doesn't mean that everybody has to attend. But those who don't attend, I'll have to find you another opportunity, and I can, for, for training. Because School Board Association has online training, it's awesome, all right? Do I have individuals in here who would like to commit themselves to January 29th from 10:00 AM through January 30th at 1:00 PM? Could stay the night or we could come back. It's not that far of a trip, I've done it 100,000 times, okay? But I need to get us registered if, if we're going to go.
10:00 AM to what?
It's 10:00 AM on, it says 10:00 AM on January 29th.
Mm-hmm.
And it says through January 30th at 1:00 PM.
Okay. Yeah, I can do that.
We'll take care of, of any food costs?
It's a Wednesday and Thursday?
Yes. On January 30th, it, the training begins again at 9:00.
It goes to 1:00?
Yeah, and actually, as I'm looking at the agenda, on the 29th, it starts at 9:00.
Does it say what time it's over?
Nine, it's over at 5:00 PM. On the 29th. Lunch is provided. All I need to know is if I need to register.
I believe I can do that, I think.
Okay?
I can do that.
Good? Okay?
Good at the moment.
Okay. Casey, one of the nice things about this is, within the next 80 days or so, we have to get conflict of interest training for you, okay? And it's included here in this, particularly, it's on that tooth, on the, the second day.
Okay.
And I promise you that you want to do this instead of the way that they had to do it.
Okay.
Okay? We could have served popcorn and taken a nap.
Is Campbell and Shatley doing this one?
No, this is through the North Carolina School Board Association, which would be a, a nice change since we've done Campbell Shatley's, okay? I'm going to register us.
Chris is entertaining now, just to put that on the record.
He is entertaining, yes. I'll go ahead and get us registered on that, okay? Mr. White, I think that's all that I have unless I've missed something.
I think that's everything.
I mean, any, anytime that y'all want to put something on the agenda, if, if you'll either let me or Cody know, we'll be pleased to do that. Because you, you have that opportunity just like everybody else, okay? All right? Lots of opportunities for you to be involved. You can serve pancakes and wear pajamas on Friday if you want to. Okay? Anything else? Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you all very much. Yes, sir. If you and, and Lisa, are you coming Friday?
I can if you need me to.